Good evening, everyone. For the benefit of those that haven't been here, this is the hearing on Robcham Village. Tonight, we do have our consultants on board, CEI, with Principal Robert Hartzellis here. We also have the town planner, town engineer, the fire chief, is what I see here so far. We're going to be discussing tonight, we're going to be discussing probably a few things, follow-up on some peer review reports, and also, we are going to handle the site itself, both interior and exterior onsite. So with that, I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Sounds like it works. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, zoning board of appeals, and thank you, those in attendance, we appreciate it. We don't want to go over things too many times here tonight, Mr. Chairman, so I don't know whether you would care for your consultants to provide their feedback, because much of what we have is either in anticipation or response to what they've submitted to you.
Okay. Yeah, why don't we, if, that's fine, I mean, we're basically going to be looking at site conditions, so we can start off with CEI's review. You want to do the water supply first, or how would you like to proceed? Grab the microphone and keep it close, but not too close.
And I'm Bob Hartzell from CEI.
Thanks, Bob.
I was thinking we could just provide an overview of our general comments and response to the Beals and Thomas' response to comments to our review of the permit application in general, and then go into review of some of the more specific review issues with regard to fire, water supply, and other issues.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. So, to start with an overview, we had...
The microphone's got to be close up.
Yeah, okay. We had provided a review letter of the permit application, and there were a fair number of, you know, details that we found opportunity to make comments, let's say, with regard to things that could have been, but were not on the plans, and other, you know, relatively small issues across the board. The Beals and Thomas' response to that was, I think, in most cases, in the category of, you know, "We acknowledge these issues, and that these are issues that we will address as the concept design moves forward." And I think, for the most part, those are, that's a reasonable answer. You know, we understand that things like, you know, the specific location of a wetland impact has some play, and it might change, and the design features on wetland replication or mitigation are something that would be under review through the Conservation Commission, you know, review process. So, in general, I think that that's a fair response. There were just three items that we actually did respond to in more detail. So, the first was just an overview, more just cautioning the board that the site appears to be, you know, fairly well maximizing the amount of physical features that you can fit onto the site. And as you're thinking about the impacts to resources, you need to be considering not just the physical footprint of what's being built, but also the temporary and sometimes permanent impacts that can come with building those. So, things like retaining walls, or stormwater features that you're going to need construction egress around, making sure that you're accounting for, you know, trees that may be cleared within wetland areas, or impacts to the wetland buffer. Those are real impacts, and they should be accounted for, just the same as any other physical footprint impact. So, I would just caution the board and the town, other town boards, as you move forward, that the impacts are likely to grow. The second comment was with regard to the request for a waiver of the town's Stormwater Management Bylaw, and we advised the board that, you know, the waiver be maintained, that the waiver not be granted, on the grounds that there are important provisions there that allow the town to enforce stormwater maintenance post-construction, and that by waiving the bylaw, you'd be losing those protections that the bylaw provides. So, it does not appear that the applicant's provided any other real rationale for that waiver, at least, nothing that we've seen and reviewed yet. So, I think we're just recommending that the waiver not be granted for the stormwater bylaw. And the third comment was with regard to the hydro-geological report, and I'll let my colleague Matt Doian speak to that.
So, the, um, we received Mass DEP's review of the hydrogeo report, but we did not review the hydrogeologic report ourselves, but we're happy to do so. When we reviewed what Mass DEP had said in their letter, we couldn't tell if the, essentially, we couldn't tell if Mass DEP or the applicant had considered the fact that the infiltration system and the wastewater soil absorption systems might be interfering with each other's So, I think we just, at this point, we just need clarification if, in the hydrogeo study, was the infiltration systems considered?
Do you want to comment on that?
Hi, good evening, Dan Feeny, professional engineer at Beals &amp; Thomas. So, on the hydrogeo report that was submitted to the DEP, I did speak with Dave Formato from Onsite Engineering. He was the one who submitted that. Beals &amp; Thomas did not perform that study. And typically, he told me that the impacts of a stormwater recharge basin are not considered on the septic leach fields, the wastewater treatment leach fields, the other way around it is. So, as part of the hydrogeologic study, there is groundwater contour maps, so when you do put 25,000, and it's actually modeled at 55,000, it's the full DEP Title V flow rates. When you put that in every day, there is going to be a mound created, so you have your estimated seasonal high groundwater that then does get mounded up, based on that steady everyday flow that's coming into the ground. So, those groundwater, there's corrected high groundwater contour maps, based on that mound that's anticipated. So, we will need to go through and take a look at that mounting impact, because the SAS that's north of the Loop Road is adjacent to Basin One, and the SASs that are on the southern side of the Loop Road are, in their proximity, in particular, one of them is in their proximity to Basin Number Two. So, there will be some impact, and the basins will have to be designed so that they stay above that corrected seasonal high groundwater elevations.
I'd like to see those designs before, correct? I mean, I think we need to have that information.
Yeah, I mean, as far as where we have, I guess, like, as a general comment, it's hard for us to review a stormwater report that's not, that doesn't have complete information. Just for example, for every stormwater review that CEI does, we ask for the test pit information, which is just, you know, someone digs a hole and records the soil classification.
Did you get the test pit information?
No, we haven't received that yet.
Why doesn't he have the information he needs?
So, the stormwater review is going to be subject of a notice of intent application and order of conditions.
But you've got the test pit already. Why don't you supply us with the information?
So, the test pits have been done in support of the soil absorption systems. I don't know whether CEI was provided with those test pits, but they were part of the hydrogeologic study that was done. So, all of that should have been provided as part of the hydrogeo study that was provided. I know it was provided...
Well, they're telling us it's not there.
So, I don't recall seeing any test pit information, but...
This came up, this came up about, over a month ago, and it was the same, there was missing information, this was one of the pieces that we did not have. So, can we identify that and get that out, please?
Absolutely. We'll get CEI all of the test pits that have been done to date. There's been test pits, there's been borings, all of that subsurface investigation, they're primarily in the areas of where you see the three SASs on the plan. The intent is, is that once the location of the building and the parking and the access drive and all that is locked down, we're talking about potentially adding additional parking, relocating the accessway based on what Mastar says, once that is done, there'll be test pits done in the footprint of the basin, in support of the notice of intent application, and then the stormwater calculations will be finalized at that time.
We'll condition it, that's all.
Yes, we're fully anticipating that the board would condition.
All right, CEI, so there was a hydraulic study done and submitted to the DEP, correct? On this project?
Yes.
And in essence, DEP came back with a preliminary approval of the information that was provided to them, correct?
Yes, but my understanding of that approval is simply that the applicant can move forward and apply for the groundwater discharge permit.
Okay, fine.
But nothing beyond that.
Okay, so, and then the other thing is that you made a statement that you thought both the applicant and the DEP, on one item, you weren't sure that they understood it, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Basically, what I'm trying to say is, I cannot confirm, and I think Dan just responded, that he needs to go back and check whether there's some interference between the soil absorption system and the infiltration system.
Okay, so, the situation that comes to us, obviously, we would make a condition on the DEP, that they get full DEP approval, but as us as a board, we're now caught between two engineering groups, and we're also being provided information that maybe the DEP wasn't on the ball, or whatever language you want to use, respected what's going on. So, really, what's going to happen for us, I mean, we're laymen, I mean, you can bury us in information if you want to, but common sense says, we've got one engineering group, we've got another engineering group, and we've got the DEP. They should all agree, and we should be supplied with that condition.
Thank you. May I respond to that, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I'm Mark Bobrowski, counsel for the applicant. I just want to remind the board of two things. Number one, the application standards for Chapter 40B are not definitive level engineering plans. I'm looking at the regulations online.
We're well aware of that. We are well aware of that.
The other thing is that the Housing Appeals Committee itself is layman, to use your terms, and I frankly lost the lead case from Canton, in which I argued they couldn't, the applicant couldn't meet the DEP stormwater standards, and the applicant responded, "Oh, yes, we can." And then the HAC said, "Well, we're not getting in the middle of it between two engineers, we're just going to say that if the DEP gives you the permit, God bless, good luck, and if they don't, you're out of luck." So, that's the way they handle it.
Thank you.
Just to further add, the DEP is not approving the stormwater basins. That will be done at the local level through the Conservation Commission.
I understand, I agree.
So, they're not missing anything with the infiltration basins. They, you know, it's not, it's not a requirement to consider the temporary mounting impacts that a basin is going to have on a wastewater treatment soil absorption system, it's the other way around, the soil absorption system on the basin. So, the Conservation Commission, and their consultant, and the town engineer will be reviewing the impacts of the SAS mounting on the basins.
Okay, thank you. Next item, huh?
I had one other comment on the stormwater report that I felt was important, and by the way, we haven't completed our letter reviewing the stormwater report, but we should have that out by the end of next week.
Okay.
Essentially, my comment is, I believe the site should be classified as a land use with higher potential pollutant loading, based on a comment, in our response to comment from B, or I'm sorry, from VHB to BSC, the original comment was that BSC asked VHB to clarify the number of weekday trips at the site. The response was that the number of trips essentially exceeded 1,000 trips per day, which would make the site a land use with higher potential pollutant loading. Therefore, that the pretreatment requirements is 44% TSS removal, and currently, the stormwater report just shows 25%.
We're certainly happy to take a look at that. The land use with higher potential pollutant loads is set up for high-traffic sites. You know, a number of our parking spaces are indoors, they're in the garage, which the garage floor drains would go to a tight tank, a holding tank, industrial holding tank, so it kind of precludes some of that, but we can look at the ability to provide the 44% pretreatment prior to infiltration.
Okay, so you'll take a look at that and provide us the information?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
If I could just add, it shouldn't be a major, like, redesign of the site, it may just involve, like, you know, adding proprietary stormwater devices, which I believe they have plenty of room for.
Okay, thank you.
So, the exhibit I have up there now is, what we wanted to try to do is just discuss some of the, let's call them, larger issues that affect the overall site design, and the first one was the parking at the site. The original application had 530 parking spaces, site-wide, including 182 within the buildings, 91 in each building. And there was a request made, and it was part of the CEI review letter from earlier this week as well, for two per unit, which would bring us up to a total of 600 required, based on the 300 units. And there had been some meetings between the applicant and town council, and so what we looked at was a couple of different areas where we could add parking. So, this plan here shows some additional parking, sort of at the northeast corner of the plant, it's at the top right-hand side, it's shown in orange, as well as down at the southern side, again, in the orange, as well as restriping, or providing eight-foot wide spaces within the building itself, which is typical of garage parking.
So, you increased your parking in the garage?
Correct.
By reducing the size of the spaces which are allowed? Did you take what you lost in the garage and put them outside?
We gained in the garage. So, the original application had nine-foot wide spaces.
Correct.
What we looked at, the architect looked at, was if we went to eight, you could get 30 more in the garage.
Correct, and that was a suggestion by the town planner, I think.
I believe so. So, you could go from 530 to 560, which still leaves you 40 short of the desired 600 parking space. So, what you see here is picking up 40 spots. And there's another plan...
How many spots are in the top right-hand corner?
Top right is an extra 10 up there on this plan.
Okay, why can't we fill the balance of those all along that side? Yeah?
Yeah, so, we did look at that option as well, so...
Steve, you're getting to know me pretty well, because that all of a sudden appeared. We could do this on the ground, we're going to have some great technology.
Yeah, so, if you did it all the way on the top, as well as down in the bottom, and basically, it's taking it right up to the edge of the, let's call it, the breakout from the soil absorption system, where you could put a retaining wall, so there's a soil absorption system on the southern side there, so that orange would come right up to that, and then on the northern side, there's the larger SAS system. If you went right up to there, you could just fit in the total of the extra 40 site spaces that you would need to get up to the 600, combined with the 30 on the, in the parking garages. So, the only reason why we looked at the other alternative as well, these ones are probably more expensive to build, just because of the slope, in particular, up to the upper right-hand corner, there's a pretty good grade difference to come down to Basin One, grade in Basin One, berm it back up. So, by adding it in there, there was already going to be a wall there, you just would need to make the wall higher.
But it works.
But it does work. I mean, you just end up, you know, your wall might go from 10 feet high to 18 feet high, or, you know, in that range, because you're losing that 18-foot of distance that the parking spaces take up, you lose the ability to off-grade in that area. So, we just looked at a couple of different options, it's, we can get 600 in on the site, it's, we failed that with restriping the garage and getting the, up to 560, that would be sufficient. I know there were some conversations, again, I don't want to speak for a meeting I wasn't at, that perhaps the spaces could be land-banked, meaning that they're not built initially, but after full occupancy, if the site's monitored for a year, to determine if additional parking is necessary, that then it could be conditions that those parking spaces would then have to be constructed. But if you did, if you did this option, you'd probably have to build the wall as if the spaces would be built, because it would be very difficult to go back and reconstruct a wall addition.
Have you accounted for any snow piling?
There's adequate space along some of the inside of the Loop Road, as well as the outside of the Loop Road. We can certainly show it on the plans to the board where we're anticipating snow removal, but, I mean, you can see in between the SAS and basin areas, there is large areas where snow could be plowed. We do have the advantage as well, is for a large development like this, we do not have a significant amount of impervious area due to, you know, over a third of the space is being located inside the building. So, it's not as much as you would normally have on a development of this size. Plus, the drive throughout the site has doubled up, as used for the parking as well, so, you know, provides access around the building, as well as access to the parking. So, it's not as much snow removal space as a typical 300-unit complex would typically require.
Have you provided us with a plan that shows both the interior restriping and the additional parking area out there?
We haven't provided any plans formally submitted to the board, we wanted to take the opportunity tonight to discuss it with the board and get the thoughts on.
No, you already submitted that to us.
We didn't, we actually put this plan together in the last few days, we didn't want to submit it, really, with no...
Yeah, if you could identify your snow storage areas?
Sure.
You know, in writing on the plan, that would help, and submit this particular plan as well?
But again, that's just up to 600 spaces.
It'd be a total of 600, both interior and exterior added up.
And that's based on 300 units, right?
300 units.
Not the 320 that's in the report?
I think the 320 was on the actual plan.
The calculation error, that's all.
Yeah, but it is 300 units, we are proposing 300 units.
Let's talk about the pet peeve of everything, and that's the access in...
Before we get down there, I know the fire chief is here tonight.
Yeah, actually, I wanted to bring that up, I'm sorry, I meant, the next item should be the aspect of the fire chief and the new machine that's hitting his department, and how that's going to be able to access the site and the courtyard.
Yeah, so, we looked at the site first, and this is just the ladder reach, and it's a little bit hard to see up there on the screen, but basically, for a, you know, approximately 60-foot-high building, if the fire truck was down at the basement level, you know, the reach that it could maneuver and still get to the roof line would be about 85, 86 feet. So, you know, we looked at where onsite for the Loop roadway, were we not within 85 feet of the building?
Chief, this thing goes 109 feet high?
Correct.
Hopefully, you're not getting on it.
So, this next exhibit kind of shows, if you look at the pink magenta areas, those would be the areas of the building on the outside, where, under the original design, which is the gray, you wouldn't be close enough to the building. So, we looked at if we realigned the access road closer to the building down there, there's also, there's two areas, but we looked at pulling it in on both the north and the south side a little bit, then we could get it for the whole outside of the Loop Road to be within that 85-foot distance. By doing that, we do lose a few spaces, because by tightening the radius up, there's less room, there's less total length that you have to maneuver. So, if you look down at the right-hand edge of the plan, we added, if you look at the orange down there, we added some parking along the inside of the Loop roadway, where the drop-off area is down there. So, I think we lost nine spaces, so we just put nine spaces back in that area. So, you could still maintain the total number of spaces, the 600, with the, you know, the spaces we showed additional as well. So, I think from the outside, we can pull that Loop roadway in and get it to work, and then that provides the full access around the outside of the building.
What about access in the courtyard?
Yeah, so, and this was just an exhibit that the architect had come up with, just showing the different reach heights. It sort of ignores how far back the fire engine is from the building, so it really only would matter if you had that perspective as well. Inside the courtyard, what we did was, we've, this plan here shows a reduced patio area in the courtyard, it used to bubble out almost all the way down to the access drive. I think the original access drive through the courtyard was in the 12 to 14-foot width, we bumped it up to 20 feet wide to be consistent with providing fire access lane width through there, and then by pulling the patio off, we're looking at the ability to then have areas where the fire truck could pull off and get to the, get to the building face and the roof line all along there. So, you can't do it from that internal spine, the 20 feet, you can see, if you can see that purple dash line, that's where 85 feet would be off the center line of that, the spine through there, but be able to provide the fire truck the ability to come off of that in particular locations, so that you can get close enough to the building, so that you can do that. So, we're still sort of working out that detail of...
Elevation-wise?
Yeah, elevation-wise, as well as just, you know, a fire truck could, you know, you'd have to coordinate it with landscaping and things like that, so he has a definitive method of pulling off of that and getting close enough, so that the ladder can reach the roof line. So, getting, again, most of the courtyard, you start coming into the courtyard at garage level, because that's where the garage entry points are, so we're trying to come up a little bit, we want to keep it all handicap accessible, all that, so, can't come up too much, but you're basically needing to get within probably 85 to 90 feet of the building in order to make it to the roof line again, with the ladder reach.
Okay, Larry, you have any comments on that?
Well, I guess the amendments help, and the dimensions are helpful, it's just that in applying them, if you were to get to the north inner rim of the courtyard, you would actually pull the truck off to the right, away from the building. Part of the problem with the size of the courtyard in calculating fall zones is that they overlap each other, so there really isn't a place in the middle where you would really want to put a fire truck. And the question is whether the chief is going to be satisfied with this approach, but if you were going to access the northern edge of the courtyard, you would actually pull the truck off to the right, away from it, and get further away from the building, so that you don't have the truck close to the building that's on fire and going to fall on you.
Right.
So, I mean, I assume that you're, if you're lucky, you'll only have a fire on one wing of the building at a time, after all, it is sprinkled, so this new approach would provide better access, but it's...
Fire chief, chief, you pretty good with that?
Yeah, it provides better access. The areas designated for us to pull off would have to be reinforced underneath the, you know, it couldn't just be blocked, it's going to take away from the vehicle. But this is better, you can get more access.
All right, so, once we get a better, clearer plan, maybe the fire chief, and you can sit down and kind of just solidify that that works, great. Following up, since we have the fire chief, and water, I've noticed on the report concerning the water main, can you fill us in on the water main, and the water going into the site, and whether or not the facility will need to have a pump station inside the building? Maybe you have some information as well?
Well, the issue that we anticipate, where we are with Milford Water Company presently, is that we're going to work with them... is that we're going to work with them and their consultants, Tatum and Howard, to reach sufficient water quantity and pressure. I think you have a, I think you have a pressure test that indicates that there is sufficient pressure and quantity out there presently. I think in fairness, an interior fire suppression system requires 20 PSI, if I'm not mistaken, not 56. Yeah, so, yeah, you lose four tenths of a pound for every foot you go up. We won't lose that much for that building. But the, what we need to do in order to satisfy this, we talked to Mr. Condry as recently as yesterday, and he's working on a rate issue at the moment. But once he finishes working on the rate issue, then we're going to get back together with him and Tatum and Howard and figure out what methods and means are necessary for us to satisfy our requirements. This is, he said something to me about a rate case that he's.
Well, there's a, yeah, they've been pending a rate case, which is now picked up again, which will take many, many months to resolve. And, you know, typical rate case, we're going to try it in April, a period of briefing period, another month, month and a half, two or three months for a DPU decision. So you're not looking for the rate increase to be approved for, I would say, four to six months.
He just said he was intense on the case at the moment, as he has been for the last week or so.
We're making it work, I guess, that's good.
Pardon?
I guess we're making him work. But I thought you were saying it was tied to the rate case in some fashion.
No, no, that wasn't what I was saying. I was saying he was focused on that. But as it relates to water pressure and fire suppression requirements, you know, when we come before you for a building permit, we'll have to go through a whole analysis with a fire suppression engineer and satisfy the fire department on that front. I think everything else that we're looking at at the moment is somewhat conjecture.
Okay. The engineer have any comments? Mike, you have any comments yet?
No, my first question is, has there been a stormwater report submitted? The town board referred to that. I haven't seen that at all. Once again, the main shot, I'd love to have it, but it's not going to be a consideration. That's my problem. I haven't seen a stormwater report.
You seen a stormwater report?
Yes.
Can you supply it to the town engineer for us?
Yes. I can give it to him. I apologize for that. It went out, I believe, last Tuesday. I was on vacation, so it went out.
No excuse. You can't have vacations like this in the middle of here.
It should have gone out to Mr. Dean. I apologize. I'll make sure he gets a copy.
Great.
Mr. Chairman, in the same vein, we'll also make sure, we'll also make sure that CEI gets the hydro geo report, because that was, Michael, when were we in front of Board of Health? When were we in front of Board of Health? Months ago. So, I mean, that hydro geo's been available for a while, and we'll make sure that you get that as well, a retransmission of that, because that was complete.
Yeah, the only other question with water, there was a comment with respect to the diameter of the water main. It was supposedly right now a 10-inch, and it was going to be replaced with a new 12-inch. Can anybody enlighten us on that?
Yeah, actually, that's been part of the discussion with Tatum and Howard and the Milford Water Company as to, for example, if that pipe is tuberculed, which means it's got growth in it, does it need to be replaced, or does it just need to be pigged? So we're looking at all of the, and happy to look at all those things. We've certainly anticipated doing that sort of thing.
Great, thank you. Okay, what else do you have on your agenda?
Well, next was the access locations. It may be best, Rob, you want to talk to it, or?
Again, Robert Nagy with Van Ness Hagen in Brussels, working on the transportation side of the equation here. So I'm going to flash three slides up on the screen that show three different access options. I apologize for the clarity. They look a lot clearer on the computer screen than they do up there. The plan that you see here is the original design. It shows a left-turn lane coming into the project site opposite, and a driveway feeding in opposite Whispering Pine Drive. If you can see from the plan, again, I apologize for not being able to get it so crystal clear on the screen, there's a 10-foot left-turn lane in the middle, heading, I guess it would be northbound on East Main Street into the project site. You've got two lanes coming out of the project driveway. You've got bus stops, as you look at the screen here to the left, on both sides of Main Street. And what this basically is showing in the blue lines that you see up there are the necessary sightlines that are required for drivers to be able to see oncoming vehicles as they're approaching the intersection. We met with Mass DOT at the very beginning of this month to go over the different options that I'm going to walk you through here. And I think the important part that came out of that meeting was they were not sold on any of the three options. They wanted to see all three options, and we're going to ultimately end up rendering an opinion as to what they felt the best decision was, as it is their road. Yes, you have a question?
Do you have any access to any kind of a pointer as your?
Yeah, I don't, and I don't think this has a laser to it. I wish I did. Sorry. You guys don't happen to have a laser pointer. Oh, wait. I felt, I thought.
It looks like a different one, to be honest with you.
Yeah. I'm sorry. I apologize for that. So we met with DOT, we walked briefly through that. There was town staff present with us, as well as your traffic consultant, and basically walked through the different options and talked to them mostly about site distance being the major issue here, and the different options that are going to be reviewed. These plans have since been submitted to DOT for their commentary as of this afternoon. They hadn't rendered a decision, frankly. When I asked them how far they'd gotten into the review, the answer was not very far. So my hope is by the next meeting, we've got a rendered decision from them as to what they prefer to see out here, and we'll certainly bring that to your attention as soon as that happens. What's that? I would hope so. We, the information was submitted about a week ago, so they usually take about a week, maybe two weeks for a simple issue like this. They're not looking at the design elements of it. What they're really focusing here on is the practicality of the driveway alignments, and more importantly, the sightlines, and how they map out. The second option you see here, you can see Whispering Pines has sort of shifted over to the right as you look at the screen, and this option shows an offset intersection to Whispering Pine Drive. It's about 160 feet to the south, if you will, on Main Street. Again, same intersection layout in that you've got two lanes coming out of the access drive, a left-turn lane going into the site. And again, you've got your sightlines that are shown in the blue there. Any object, just so everybody is clear, any object that's over two feet in height that resides inside that blue triangle there needs to be eliminated, so that sightlines can be maintained out there. In both the options, from a vertical perspective, meaning in a flat, two-dimensional perspective, there's not any obstructions that couldn't be removed or would block the sightlines out there. So we're confident that that is an issue that we're comfortable with. In both options as well, as I go back and forth between the two, between this one and this one, the sightlines from a vertical perspective, meaning as you look over the crest of a hill, the sightlines in this particular instance, on the one that you see here with the offset, are cleaner. You can see a little bit further than what is required by the ASHTO design standards for sightlines. Hold on. Yep, and on this one here, we meet, and I will say meet, at the very minimal amount, but what we meet it, the ASHTO design standards for sightlines on this one. So the other option has a system where you can probably see another 200 feet beyond what is required by ASHTO. And when you line it up opposite Whispering Pine Drive, you meet it to the, I will say, to the nth degree, to the foot, almost. Oops, sorry. That is, yes. So both of these require an easement from the abutment that's to the north of the site driveway. Obviously, the driveway that is closer, the one that lines up opposite Whispering Pine Drives, requires a bigger easement from them, because they're required to see more over more of their property. This one here has a minor impact to it, a very minor impact to it, but both require an easement from that property owner. And then the last, oh, go ahead.
Are you saying that the entrance and exit to Whispering Pine is now to the left?
No, in this scenario here, the entrance and exit to the project site has been offset by about 160 feet to the south of Whispering Pines. Whispering Pines is not moving any way, shape, or form. That's, yeah, I wish I had.
I'm just finding, I'm sorry, I can't.
Sorry, I wish I had a laser pointer and I could, yeah. So in the very middle of the screen is.
Oh, I see, okay.
Is where the project drive is.
I was focusing on the, I guess, the round circles being the driveway to the site, but now it's moved, okay?
Yeah, that's.
I got it.
Yeah, the circles are more like landscaping.
Yeah, okay.
And the such. In this particular case, with the offset driveway here, we will have to do some work within the wetland buffer zone as you go south on Main Street a little ways. There is, there will be a little bit of widening that will happen along Main Street to accommodate the left-turn lane and the tapers that need to go into the design of that. But we can avoid any direct impacts to the wetlands in that scenario as well. And then the last option was one that was presented to us, which was asked of us to take a review, which is essentially an offset split driveway, where you've actually got the entrance to the project site opposite Whispering Pine Drives. You're not going to have traffic exiting the driveway there. The traffic that would be exiting happens, again, about 160 feet, 170 feet to the south of the project drive. The challenge associated with this is that you'll have traffic that's exiting the project site. Anybody who wants to take a left, for example, onto Main Street, will have to do so through the left-turn lane that exists out there, that would be feeding into the site. It's not a deal killer. It happens in lots of different locations, but it is something that we'll have to spend some time working and making Mast Dot comfortable with, if that's ultimately the decision that this board would like us to pursue as we go through this. Again, I, my gut tells me, and I haven't heard a rendering from them yet, Mast Dot probably won't enjoy this one, because it's just too much confusion going on out there, and you've got the turns happening within the turn lanes. They'll choose, they'll most likely choose one of the other two options where it's all consolidated at one direct point. Again, not speaking for them, I just think that that's my gut feeling as to where they're ultimately going to go with it. Both options provide bus stop accommodations, sidewalks along the frontage of the project site, and like I said, left-turn lanes going into the site with some additional paint to sort of protect that left-turn lane as you come southbound on Main Street.
On this concept, reviewing the busing going into the complex and maybe connecting and coming out the other side, has that been looked at?
That, the busing piece has not been looked at as part of this. I could easily see the design being modified to provide a little loop turnaround, if you will, for a bus that entered the site driveway, and then wanted, instead of going all the way into the site, maybe doing something where the roadway splits, the enter and exit lane splits. You could probably do something in the middle there.
Some of the discussion has been that the residents of this area may be sitting in traffic at the end in cars, waiting for the bus to show up before they let their kids out, similar to the subdivision across the street, Zane Ridge. And we talked about maybe providing something along the line of a parking lot or staging area for those cars to go, so that they don't impede any traffic flow going in or out.
I would think, given the distance between the driveway on Main Street and the actual building interior to the site, I think that wouldn't be a bad idea for the project to continue to examine that as an option. I will say, do you want me to present this? I will say that we were just presented prior to the meeting here with a plan. It's a very simple plan. I'm not entirely sure who presented it to us. Okay, Larry did. It actually looks at Whispering Pine Drive and illustrates to us, and again, I know you can't see this here, and I apologize.
I can see it. We looked at that, like a right-turn only out.
Yeah, so it would be a little sliver widening along Whispering Pine Drive, probably just, you know, five feet or so, to allow a car who is waiting to turn left to wait and turn left, and perhaps a car that wanted to turn right not have to be stuck behind them. It wouldn't be a formal turn lane, the way it's laid out here, but would allow cars to, you know, given the volume of traffic, the limited volume of traffic coming in and out of that particular street, to allow that traffic to continue to move without having to be unduly delayed by anybody wanting to turn left.
Yeah, it just helps if it's going to be at that major intersection, with the blessing of DOT, then Whispering Pine, that location has to be addressed, I think, just to help the whole flow.
Agreed. So again, at this point in time, what we're doing is we're waiting for DOT to come back to us with their thoughts on this. And like I said, as soon as they do, I'll make sure that I work with your town engineer and planner, as well as the board and your consultant, to express what their opinions are in this matter. Like I said earlier. Well, the meeting, yeah, the meeting happened back in early March, early this month. Then we went out and we actually had to do some survey out there to gather some of the sightlines and stuff like that. My guess is that they're going to send an email or email, because it's not a major design review for them just yet. I think they're just going to render an opinion that, hey, they've looked at all three options. They concur with the analyses and the sightline measurements, and that we've specifically asked them to render an opinion as to which one they prefer to go with.
Can you supply these three options to us?
Absolutely.
So that we can at least take a look at it while it's being submitted to DOT, whether it's the town engineer and town planner, just so that we can kind of verify what you're verifying, so we're on the same page?
Yeah, I have copies for your town engineer, and I have a copy for your board, just one copy for the board for you tonight. And I can send you electronic stuff.
Electronic, Lisa.
Later. Okay.
Any comments? Larry, you have any comments? I'll take it to the board. Any comments from the board? Charlie?
Just Larry, and from everybody's perspective, the purpose of this, I would say, is twofold. One is safety, and the other one is convenience. And I would assume that safety would be the prevalent one that we would want to go with. Is there any opinion of these three options, which would be the safest for people to deal with, or are they all equally as options safe?
They all meet the design standards that are required here. I would say that the offset one, the full offset, not the split driveway, the full offset one, provides better sightlines coming into and out of the project driveway. Not to say that the original one that was opposite Whispering Pines doesn't provide what's required, but it does provide better sightlines out there. You know, everything has to do with everything else. By doing so, you're now creating some additional impact potentially to wetland resource and a few other issues out there. So it all kind of comes together in a decision-making process. But yes, if, to answer your direct question about the more safe option, I would suggest to you that the offset one provides better sightlines as it relates to the overall design.
Thank you. When you look at that, just take a close look to make sure that the abutments across the street were not directly impacting a driveway.
Yep.
To the best of your ability.
We did. We actually lined it up. There's a row of trees. You can see it sort of shaded down there. We actually lined up the driveway so that headlights wouldn't directly be shining into the lights, the living rooms of those houses. We lined it up with those row of trees for that reason. We could move it a little to the left, a little to the right, but then you'd start getting into driveways and more.
And you accomplished the same thing. You've got a turning lane?
We've got a left-turn lane coming into the project driveway, and then two separate lanes coming out of the project driveway, correct?
Yeah, you'll have to just do some replication on the wetlands on that particular concept. Okay, anybody else? Any other board members have questions?
Along the lines of talking about an entrance and exit, will that have to be determined or decided upon first? Because when I look at what will probably be a removal of excess rock up in that area will have a huge impact on construction traffic. So one of these will have to be predetermined, and that will be the set entrance and exit that the construction vehicles will also be using?
I would imagine so, unless there's another access point to the back of the site that I'm unaware of, that we don't want to use for residential traffic at some point in the future, which I can't imagine there will be. I would imagine that the driveway that's going to serve for the construction purposes will also serve ultimately as the main driveway for the project site.
I mean, do you agree that there's going to be a huge impact on construction traffic? And do you have any plans to? And, and do you have any plans to handle that specifically?
I mean, what we'll try to do on this site is we'll try to reuse the material to the extent we can. So we'll segregate the different materials, the organics from the inorganics and stockpile it. And that'll all be part of the, the NEPTES permit that we'll be filing and, and the construction permits that we'll be putting together. So how much rock will actually, or any material will have to ship off the site? We'd like to try and balance the site so that we don't, we don't have a big export on this site. You know, if we're able to create our own crusher run and put our own crusher on site and create our own stone and for our own roadbeds and our own foundations, that's, that'll be our preference. It's, it's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of concrete guys that have been calling me saying, you know, when you get going on that site, let me have the rock. I'm hoping we can use the rock ourselves.
There's a lot of rock there.
Yes, understood. We know what's going on next door. A lot of Milford pink. Was that me?
Anyone else could be heard?
I had one other thing to go over to, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'll, we'll get his question first.
Hi, Jim Flanagan, eight Whispering Pine Drive. First of all, I'd like to thank you for looking at those optional alignments of the road. I think that everybody's concerned about the wetlands, but I don't think anything's more irretrievable and irrevocable than loss of life. So I'm appreciative of that. I did have two questions. One is related to the fire truck access inside the courtyard. And this winter has prompted us with so much snow that will, you have a 20-foot, let's call it a pathway for the truck, but you said optionally it could go off onto the courtyard. Will the snow be cleared from that at all times? Okay. And the second question I have is, in our neighborhood, we've been impacted pretty heavily by the blasting at the mine. Are you going to be blasting up there? What will you do for protection of the residents in the area? Thank you.
Blasting, at the end of the day, the blasting is under the jurisdiction of the fire chief. And there are federal rules and there are state rules related to what we will and won't do. I'm not sure what Mr. Shea, how Mr. Shea is conducting his operations, but I imagine the chief can speak to that. We'll end up doing a, once we determine if there is blasting, we'll do a pre-blast survey. And that goes to a certain distance that we'll agree with, with the fire department. And after we do a pre-blast survey, then we'll move our way through the blasting process and the work will be matted and controlled. And that would be, that would be the extent of it. I mean, Mr. Shea is going down, I don't know what distance he's going down or across, but his volumes are fairly significant. I mean, our, our volumes, actually, one of the things we haven't really said is that the, the footprint that you've seen for this building is probably going to shrink some because we've, we've thought about how it's going to go. But we would shrink the, the footprint is fairly limited and the depth is fairly limited. And as I said earlier, we're going to try and balance the site. And so it's not in our best interest to move any more stone than we have to. And so that would be the case.
Thank you, Steve. Yes, as a matter of fact, Jim, to answer some of that question, when, when Mr. Shea was blasting and was coming up for his renewal of his permit, the residents of Zane Ridge got very concerned because of, they didn't think the pre-blast, pre-blasting survey went further enough. So we increased that area because of the deep blasting he was doing over there. And again, it's not going to be as, as bad as what he's doing there from, from a quarrying standpoint. But I'm assuming we can, we can have something in the, in the decisions along with the fire chief that will at least be able to assist properly for the pre-blast surveys. It's important to have the pre-blast surveys, no question. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else could be heard? I believe we have, you have one more item, I believe, Steve?
Yes, sir. I wanted to just go over, there was some question at, at a point in time about archaeological. Do you want me to cover that or you think that's?
Sure, you can bring it up.
Okay. So this was not something that we could email around very easily. So just.
We'll pass it on.
Okay.
I don't.
I've got, I've got about 500.
I don't.
400.
I need. This is, what I'm, what I'm giving you is an excerpt from the, it's actually the archaeological portion from the, from the casino MIPA filing. And this was done by Public Archaeology Lab, which in fact, if you're an inveterate newspaper reader, you'll see that Powell was cited in the Boston Globe and the Wall Street Journal this week. Powell did a, and they've done work for me and I think they do nice work. But that being said, so one of the things that they had to do for the casino was they had to, they had to do a environmental notification form. And if you turn to, this, this, this is not light reading, but if you turn to page two, it says results of the due diligence review. And it's italicized, it says archaeological resources. A review of the MHC inventory identified one archaeological resource within the project area, figure two, the Milford factory site, mil 19. So if you then, if you then flip to page three, it basically says the same thing. It reiterates. And it's, reiterates again on page four, same thing. If you flip then to page five, it's a plan. And it basically, it draws a circle around this site and Mr. Shea's site. Because at that time, they were the, they were the, they were co-joined on the idea of bringing a casino into this location. And it says Milford Casino Project Area, limit of combined area of potential effect. So if you then flip to the following page, which is page six of 10, and you look very carefully, and I'll tell you right now, the lighting's not very good in here and my eyes aren't what they used to be. All right? But you'll notice all of, all of the identified locations are along East Main Street with one exception. Well, actually, they go back in behind Zane Ridge too. You'll notice kind of in the middle of the page, it says mil 19 with a red cross through it. And you'll notice that that's right in the middle of the power line. So the only spot to answer the, the question was brought up at some point in time, were there any archaeological artifacts on this site?
That was me, probably.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for doing that. This, this indicates that a very high-quality outfit figured out that the only thing that's anywhere near the area is under the power line, which is candidly, I think is on Mr. Shea's property. All right? So it's not, it's, if you look at our survey, it's not on our property. So that answers the question. I also just for, for those of you who are familiar with the Mass Historic website, they have something called MACRIS, which it lists, this lists all the historic locations in town, according to the Mass Historic. And so there, you'll find that they're almost all street addresses along East Main Street going down towards, going down towards Holliston. And, and that's, that's, I guess, the full extent of the archaeological discussion, unless there are any questions.
Thank you for providing this. I was pretty familiar with some of the work that was done down there. And I believe, Mike, you were at Gary Air when that work was done, correct? So we found a lot of stuff on one site, right? Currently, right now, it's in a safe zone, being protected probably by the military. What was it, 280 artifacts they picked up, Mike? Something like that? But I appreciate you supplying this that was brought up and it's, you followed right through and you provided the report for us and it's greatly appreciated.
Our pleasure.
Any other comments or questions?
I, I just thought I'd go through the list of what we covered at our little get-together that not everybody was at.
Please do.
Okay. So a couple of weeks ago, the chair and town council and Mr. Dean were able to sit down with us and Larry Duncan, sorry, Larry, and sat down with Mark and myself. And we went through kind of a list of the, of outstanding issues. And so I just thought I'd walk you through what that was. And that was on March 12th. So we discussed transportation, which Rob Nagy covered for you. We talked about wastewater and how we're moving forward with the PWTF, water and how the Milford Water Company is, how we're dealing with them. And conservation, Michael, I think at the time, was looking for the stormwater report. So we'll make sure to make that happen. Architecture, we talked primarily about the terraces and their, and their effect in the back, in the back area. And so you'll see that from what you saw tonight, and we'll distribute a, a full set of plans of what you got, of what you saw today, we've cut those terraces down. Parking count, we're at the 20 that you were, that you asked us about. One of the questions that came up was determining height. Because if we're cutting down, I'll tell you right now, depending on how the, how the terraces play out and how the grading in that back terraced area plays out and our desire to try and maximize natural ventilation into the ground, into the garage, we're interested to know how the town typically determines height, where it measures from, et cetera, whether it follows the ICO, the Mass Building Code, whether you have your own particular in your bylaw. We'd just like a little guidance on that as we move forward.
Definition for zoning purposes, right?
Just use your, and just use that.
I'm not sure what purpose you're talking about. I'm just saying that zoning bylaw has a definition, right?
Yes.
For zoning purposes, other purposes, maybe not.
Okay. All right, we'll take a, we'll take a look at that because if, we're looking for some clarification related to the waivers. Pardon?
The area that you asked to waive, but.
Okay.
The definition, right?
Actually, we hadn't previously asked for a waiver because we're in a five, we're in a five-story zone and we've built, and we designed a five-story building. So, okay. Balance of site, you're looking for what we're going to do for the balance of the site. And as we described, we'd like to, we'd like to be able to have some type of active or passive recreational use that's allowed on the site and the accessory, possibly business that goes along with supporting that. So, and the archaeological, which you just saw. So I, I think that's just for the, just for the record, sir.
Yeah, actually, I think we discussed at length the, the garage area at the hospital of how that was handled. I don't remember the height of that, Larry?
Yeah, I don't remember the actual height. I assume there are a couple of them.
Park it underneath as well, yeah. But as, as Jerry indicated, you can follow the ZBA guidance on that. If there isn't anything else, again.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just, you know, Steve, you were just making reference to the meeting we had, which was very productive and useful, I think, which perhaps we ought to do again between now and the 25th. And you may be reaching the point where you want to begin to put together what you would be willing, you know what the concerns are, you know what the discussion has been, you know what the issues are, begin to put together what you would be willing to live with in terms of conditions, not to say that we would, but we can begin to talk about those and exchange some ideas. So maybe you should begin to do that. And again, I think we need probably another meeting would be, might be worthwhile, maybe not, but it might be worthwhile between now and the 25th.
We'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, specifically addressing the issues concerning access to the site and making sure our town engineer, town planner are aware when the DOT issue does come up. I'd like to get some, some outside verification concerning what you presented tonight to make sure that we're all satisfied with, with the sightline, the sightline distances, which seem to be a priority, along with safety. Personally, you know, the wetlands and conservation are very sensitive areas. When it comes to the replication, I think replication may be necessary in order to provide the safety. So that's paramount, I think, to this board. I think the safety aspect of the entrance is paramount. And I just don't know how the state's going to look at that, but from this perspective, safety is important to us. Also, would like to get a guideline, timing of your construction in the event this continues to move the way I think it's moving, whether it's two years, 18 months from whenever you do get your necessary permits, so that we've got a, an idea of a timeline. And we can discuss the options of the work timeline. Clearly, you know, we need to talk about operations, time, weekends, that type of stuff concerning the construction schedule, if that does happen. So with that, we look forward to the next meeting. I'm sure we'll all be in touch. The next meeting is scheduled for the 25th.
25th, I think it's seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, the 25th, which is a Wednesday. With that, everyone have a wonderful evening. Thank you for joining us and good night.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.